Excellent. So, everybody said they could hear me. We've got a good group today. It's a small little group that we're training with. And I want to start really just by covering the website first. Most of you sure have already checked it out. Then what I'm going to go into, after we talk about the exam process a little bit, then I'm going to go into a charcuterie 101 for everybody. So if you're more than welcome to stay on for all of it, or like I said, it's going to be recorded. First thing you need to do is check out the IDDBA website. IDDBA, if you go under personal resources, it'll lead you to certifications, which is charcuterie. So we'll start at the beginning here. All I did was go to professional resources, charcuterie exam, and tagged it in. If you have not, please know it is up to you to sign up and pay for the exam. This is something that I don't really, I mean, I could call a couple of people at IDDBA, but it's really going to be up to you to take these steps. Here's our inaugural class from last year. You'll see Nathan Aldrich at the top. I think they did it by score and not really by alphabetically, but whatever. One thing in here, it's not a big deal, but like two people from this list that I'm aware of, me and Jeff Campo, we're like, they're cheese people. Most everybody else came from Hormel or a big meat company like that. So just walking into that, I just wanted to tell you all this information. So these weren't like charcuterie people, but more so like Hormel, you know, deli folk that were able to pass this. So if they can do it, I know you can do it too. It's geared towards establishing, the exam is geared towards establishing subject matter expertise in the sale and handling of charcuterie products. Passing the exam will give an individual the ability to be a certified salumier. Now at the IDDBA, of course, which is happening in Atlanta, Georgia, so you will need to plan to come to Atlanta, Georgia for you to take this exam. We're going to be passionate about supporting the growth in the deli and believe that the subcategory of charcuterie will continue to provide retailers opportunities to capitalize on many trends that drive consumers to want to purchase charcuterie products. That's a fair statement. Charcuterie is growing in popularity, especially here in the States as far as understanding what it is, whether it's on Instagram or whatnot. But the thing about this test is it's geared towards having everybody in the industry speak with one voice. And I think that's really cool because right now I think the word charcuterie gets just thrown about. Here, there, I get on a lot of soapboxes, right? If you go on Instagram and you look at a charcuterie board, or people talk about hashtag charcuterie boards, and it's mostly flowers or candy or vegan things. But we're going to talk more about words have meanings in charcuterie, especially has a meaning of being cured flesh. But on this website, you're going to have the exam content as well as a recommended reading. The charcuterie professional exam questions were written and reviewed by subject matter experts. So I was lucky enough to get asked to come up to the very first meeting, I think this was in 2019, up in Wisconsin where we discussed what's important for people to know about charcuterie. So I was kind of like a retail representative saying, this is what I feel is important for retail professionals to know about. And then, of course, they pulled together a separate group of individuals to come up with the questions. And this was put together, everybody, by the exact same people, the exact same outside group that helped the American Cheese Society develop the CCP exam. So if you've taken the CCP exam, you've gone through this format, and I think you already have a leg up. So that's something to really remember. Let me make sure I'm admitting people. So if you've taken that exam, you've got a good step. The people who wrote the exam were charcuterers. So you're talking about like Cristiano Criminelli, Kevin Oates, and other charcuterers. They kind of pulled together to make sure they came up with some good questions. So here we're going to say the questions are written, reviewed by subject matter experts. The exam will be proctored, and each year the questions are analyzed statistically to identify and improve any opportunities. So just like with the CCP, if they get to a point where, again, these are not professional question writers. So if they write a question that's like, that you don't understand or doesn't make sense, or like a majority of the people miss, they're going to throw it out and not use that, and it won't count against you. So that's something too important to remember, just like the CCP. Let's see here. The certification committee reviews questions with statistically questionable outcomes to determine whether they should be modified or deleted from the pool. Once these issues are resolved, the final scores are calculated. And this could take up to eight weeks. So you'll get to know, I think I found mine out about five or six. Registration, this is important. We are in April. So if you've yet to register for the exam, it closes April 29th, do it ASAP. The exam will be offered annually. The next proctored in-person exam is scheduled for Saturday, June 4th. So again, you're going to need to be in Atlanta, Georgia on Saturday, June 4th for the IDDBA. The cost is 450 bucks for members, 500 for non-members. Eligible exam takers will have a minimum of 1,440 hours paid or unpaid work experience in charcuterie or deli retail during the past two years. So in the past two years, if you've been a sales rep, if you're a buyer, if you're a cheesemonger, if you're an account rep that works with stores and works with specialty food, you're good to go. But you'll be, of course, need to be able to prove that when you fill out your application. Because what you'll do is you apply, and then they approve or disapprove depending on your qualifications. All right. If you need financial assistance, you can contact them. Perfect. So the exam content, I've already sent out to the group this page and a incomplete PowerPoint around this. I'm sorry about that, but I'm so busy this year. But what we want to talk about in this session is really just kind of, I want to go over this. I'm not going to read the entire thing to you, but you should already have it. If not, I'll send a recap after this. And again, this is on the website that you can get yourself. So the content outline is a delineation of the major domains of practice. So again, they're using the words domains that threw some people off, but those are just areas to study, guys. So major domains of practice, tasks performed, and knowledge applied by a charcuterie professional in the practice of their profession. A charcuterie professional is an individual with knowledge of the production, marketing, handling, and characteristics of charcuterie. A charcuterie professional understands the business, the safety and sanitation processes associated with the sale of charcuterie, and educates customers on individual product attributes such as origin, product methods, excuse me, production methods, and to facilitate sales to meet the needs of the customer. All pretty words, right? But just like in the CCP, like common voice. We want to speak with the same language so that everybody refers to charcuterie in the same way that takes this test. And we, those of us who are professional or certified salumiers, we are the mouthpiece for charcuterie in America, and it's going to be up to us to continue to drive all this. The good thing is, it's only 100 questions. So the charcuterie professional certification consists of 100 multiple choice test questions distributed among the major domains of practice as presented below. So you're going to need to know preparation of charcuterie products for merchandising. Eight percent of the test. Big with 42% of the test is marketing, sales, including customer service and merchandising. So preparation of charcuterie products for merchandising, you're talking about, you know, how it's made. So only 8% of this test is how products are made. So when we studied how products are made with charcuterie, we're going to the overarching ways, guys. The overarching ways. And I'm going to talk about the four production methods, and that's what you're going to need to focus on. But so you're not going to need to know like the step-by-step process of making a tureen or step-by-step process of making head cheese. You're not going to need to know that. Slow it down. Don't worry. But think of it, because this is really, I think it's more heavily geared towards retailers, to be quite honest. So if you've ever worked a retail counter where you've had to slice cheese or slice meats, this is what we're talking about. So even with the merchandising in there, it's how do you receive the product? At what temperature do you receive the product? How do you display it? And how do you guarantee its freshness? And how do you serve it to customers? It's pretty easy stuff. I was, I'm not taking away from the exam because I studied hard for it, and I studied hard for the CCP, but I felt like the CCP was much more difficult. Where this one was, I don't want to say it's easy, but I was like, oh, I picked it all up really quickly. Product handling is going to take 28%. Because that's really going to tie into, even though sanitation regulate, product handling is more about food safety. So food safety, you need to know about botulism and what is in charcuterie that prevents it. That's the big one. Business practices and finance. So again, from a retailer standpoint, whether you're running a business operation or owning an operation, cost of goods, how do you set pricing? How do you set a retail? You know, if you buy something for this cost and you want to get a 52% gross profit, can you figure that out? That's also in the exam. So that portion of math is there. What's not going to be there, which I thought was the most difficult at the CCP was, I don't know if you remember, you guys, where we had to, like the fat in dry matter. Oh, that one destroyed me, right? The other ones I got pretty well, but there's nothing that complex. Really, you just need to figure out your retail or backwards your cost of goods. Business practices and finance, that's it. Safety and sanitation regulations, that's big. You need to know how to clean a slicer. You need to know when's it better to use a hand crank slicer versus an electric slicer. An example for that is, I don't know if any of you know, an electric slicer for like deli meats. Beautiful slicer, but it works at such a high RPM spinning that blade that for good delicious charcuterie, it almost heats the meat up a little bit. And you really don't want that. And so for like a prosciutto, the hand crank, if you've ever heard of, what is it, a Berkel, I believe it is, you know, hand crank slicer? That spins the blade at an RPM that's beautiful for slicing, but doesn't heat the meat in any way. Know things like that. Alrighty. So we're going to go through the domains and what are my next presentations? I just wanted to give you an introduction to this. We're going to continue to move through it, but that's easy, y'all. 100 questions, and again, some of the questions may get thrown out. You will have, and I think we've got another page to it, where you had, you're going to have about, I think it's two hours for the exam. Where for the CCP, I believe it was three hours for 150, and I think you're going to have two hours for 100 questions. All right. Now, the old recommended reading list, and I've got some pictures to go with this. This is a lot of books, guys. If you've already been on here, you've already seen, you're like, oh my God. So I went through luckily with GFI, of course, and we, the company, allowed me to purchase all these books. So I have a copy of all of them. I skimmed through most, and I found a couple or a couple of few that was better suited for the exam, especially if you don't have 650 bucks to buy all these. Number one, this is Olympia Provisions. This is their American Charcuterie. Eight bucks on Amazon. Probably one of the better written books about charcuterie that I own. Awesome. Definitely get that one. We're learning more about the history of charcuterie and going into the past. This is a great book, Salted and Cured. This is on your list. I just got more of the history out of everything with this book. Awesome book, also on Amazon. And I also found, even though it's mostly recipes, but charcuterie, and this is the Brian Postelin version here. Also a great book. If you're in for fourth, I can't get it on the screen here, in the charcuterie. These four, the first three, I think will get you fine, but if you get those four books, you're going to be able to find all the information you need. And I'm going to kind of, after this exam, I do want to get with all of you for some feedback. So we, so I can give feedback to the IDDBA as far as study sessions and things like that, and how we can work as a team to really educate, or better pull things down and better educate everybody. All right. One second. Alrighty, so this is the presentation I put together for our sales team. I make sure. Somebody hit me up in the chat if you can see this appropriately, please. All right. If anybody's close to your chat, just let me know. Paul Perfect, thank you so much, everybody. Good deal. So I'm going to go through here. This is, if you came to our national sales meeting, saw this wonderful, I'm going to reiterate. If not, of course, let's get into it. So certified salumier, this is, I think I already read this to you. This was off their website. And again, this is just another way to break it down. 100 multiple choice questions among these domains. So you have five major domains going in here. We just discussed that. And here's a picture of all the recommended reading. Good books, but it's a lot. Hopefully one day you can get them all collected, but again, I understand that that's a great deal more. And as we work into the future, guys, I'm going to be working on condensing this information as much as possible. But that's just a little bit more to go. So this is, now we're talking about our cheese 101. Excuse me, our charcuterie 101. And this is our presentation. And I just happen to be a big Anthony Bourdain fan. Been for a long time, but this is just a beautiful quote from him. "To me, life without veal stock, pork fat, sausage, organ meat, demi-glace, or even stinky cheese is a life not worth living." Now, charcuterie, just in its basic form, you will get asked questions about this, like charcuterie is a catch-all term used to define a plethora of cooked, cured, and fermented meat products. You're not necessarily have to know it's derived from the French, you know, it's derived from the French words for flesh, which is char, and cooked, cute. And the term charcuterie came to designate the shops in the 15th century in France that sold the pig. So pig as well as the awful, which is the entrails, that really a lot of charcuteries come from. And the term salumi, which is what we are salumiers, is the Italian term to refer to cured, cooked, and fermented products. And that's fair question on the test. Background for all of this, I found it salted and cured. Great book, again, for the history, for the background, to kind of get like the deep dive in there. So the history of preserved meats is as old as the history of cheese. It probably older, quite honestly. I always go through a little bit of a long-winded way of explaining this, and I'm going to stick by it. So there were a couple of major things that happened to us as a species, as humans, before we became the actual, the homo sapiens that we are today. Number one, the thing that affected human beings to help us grow and evolve past every other animal is we learned about fire. Number one, fire, because before fire, human beings would have to just, we spent most of our day chewing. Most of our day, whether we picked up a fibrous plant that needed a lot of chewing, or if we had meat, we didn't know how to cook it yet, so it was raw. So we were just gnawing on it. You know, if you see pictures of the, you know, the bones that archaeologists have found, early humans, we had big jaws, we had small heads and big jaws, because we spent all day chewing. But one day, we humans, we humans, we figured out that fire, besides keeping us warm, I'm pretty sure that's the first thing we noticed, is oh Lord, I can keep warm and put it on a stick and chase away wolves. But also, we learned how to put it to food. Once we put fire to food, then we were able to take whatever nutrient food that we had, nutrient-rich food, and we were able to get more nutrients from it with less chewing. That's what cooking did for us. We could eat broccoli, mm, and chew a couple of times, swallow it down, and get all the nutrients from it, instead of chewing all friggin' day long. So fire was huge. And fire is what came about with one of the first ways also to preserve meat. So once we learned we could cook meat, and we started cooking meat, oh, we got more nutrients in us, our brains got bigger. So we even, we changed shape. Our heads got bigger, jaws slimmed up a little bit. We still have those wisdom teeth for some reason, but that's basically how that part of evolution worked. And while we had that fire, early humans learned that by hanging it high above the fire, just off to the side, that it would dry that meat out a little bit and preserve it for a little bit longer, meaning you wouldn't get sick, it wouldn't go rancid right away. So that was great. God bless fire, right? But then, our next discovery came along, and that was salt. Preserving with salt, that was a huge deal. Especially started out with those areas around all the oceans, because that's where the first salt curing really happened. So once we learned about salt, though, we could, we could salt fish, they could last a long time. But we also learned how to put that salt around charcuterie. Whether we pack it on the outside or make a brine solution. And from there, we learned about cheese, and we learned how we could, you know, pickle basically vegetables. So salt was the next big thing. And then, of course, once we learned how to get, I think our third big evolutionary step in food, of course, would be when we learned how to use cultures, when we learned how to ferment. So I feel like fire, salt, and fermentation, to me, those are the first big three. You're not going to get asked all about that, but I think that's a good mindset to go into with thinking about charcuterie and the history at the very beginning. All right. Also, please ask questions as we go along. Nothing is off limits. So production methods for charcuterie, this is important. This is what the test is about. So after the exam, this is kind of when I went into and building the charcuterie training right here that I'm going through. So the four big ones, which of course go into, and they're a little out of order from what I just said, but you got smoking, cooking, dry curing, and fermentation. So those are the four big ones, fermentation, dry curing, smoking, and cooking. And if they ask you that, they could ask you a question, just like on the CCP, it's like, which of the, which of the following are the four production methods for basic charcuterie making? And they could give you fermentation, dry curing, smoking, boiling, whatever, you know, give you a couple of wrong ones out of that. But that's definitely one to remember. Alright, team. So don't worry, I'm going to send you all this presentation at the end as well. So fermentation, curing, smoking, and cooking. So these types of controlled curing and drying of the meats prevent spoilage while simultaneously improving texture and taste. So what you could ask, the number one reason for curing meats in the first place is to prevent spoilage. And then kind of like improving texture and taste is something that just happens along with it, right? When meat is dry cured, it loses 30% of its weight in water. Like a stock reduced by one-third, meat reduced by a third is rich, dense, and intensely flavorful. That's a question. This is, this is kind of how this test goes. I love it. Salting and drying meat does more than just coats out moisture and concentrate flavor. This is on the test, okay? So it dehydrates the microbes that cause decay and spoilage and other potentially, excuse me, potentially hazardous bacteria, killing them or inhibiting, making their ability to multiply inhospitable, right? Crucially though, curing also allows good bacteria and mold to survive. Those that protect the meat and deepen its characteristic fermented flavor. You will get asked a couple of things about good bacteria, because this is something that's important to charcuterie makers. Think about the salami, right? Think about, you look at the picture at the bottom right. Most of those salami casings, once they hang up, they either get, why that white mold attached to it, or sometimes even yeast. But that's what they want, because that imparts good flavor, and they want us to share that with consumers. So as you're going through studying and looking at the big picture, that's what you need to think about, is that what's important on this test? Just the big picture stuff. You only have 100 questions. So they're not going to needle you with the fine points of list every single ingredient in finocchiona salami. But what they will ask is, what's the one major ingredient in finocchiona salami that makes it different than other salamis? Fennel. That's what you need to know. So if there's something major, know that. But the nitty-gritty, like you don't have to know the pH level of a salami to be out of refrigeration. You don't know, you don't need to know that much. So don't worry about that. But this is, I remember this being on the test too, because this isn't a quote from me. In fact, by the time it's ready to eat, you could say that your salami is alive. "The site of a thriving ecosystem of microorganisms that simultaneously prevent harmful bacteria growth and lend distinctiveness and funk to each bite." Okay, so talking about just fermentation. Fermentation is going to happen with your sausages and salami. So fermentation happen, you're only going to get that from your ground meat, which is going to be sausages or salami. And you can hear a lot of times sausages and salami be interchangeable when they're worked, because sausages generally refer to raw, where salami is more about the cure. But the salami is a sausage until it's cured, if that makes sense. But they don't get into that big and nitty-gritty, so don't worry about that. But fermented sausages were created by salting chopped or ground meat to remove moisture while allowing beneficial bacteria to break down sugars into flavorful molecules. This is what we love. This is, if you took the cheese exam, this is why we love this. Bacteria break down these sugars to produce what? Lactic acid, which not only affects the flavor of the sausage, but lowers the pH from six to 4.5 to five. I don't remember a lot of pH questions on that test, but we've got it here as far as what you're really looking for with your, with your salamis. And this preventing the growth of bacteria that could spoil the sausage. So these effects are magnified during the drying process as the salt and acidity are concentrated as moisture is extracted. So the ingredients found in fermented sausage? Meat, right, fat, bacterial culture, salt, spices, sugar, nitrite. Those are your ingredients. And I would know those. I would get a sense of, they could ask, I don't know. They don't really go for tricking. The same way with ACS is they don't write something to be like, I'm going to get them, they're going to, I'm going to fool everybody. That's not the point. The point is, I want you to know what everybody else knows. But here's the major thing is, you have bacterial culture in salamis. And that's what gives salamis its tang. So if you've ever had a slice of salami, it's like, mm, kind of tangy. That's the lactic acid in it. And different, and just like with cheeses, different cultures are going to lend towards different flavors at the end, right? So that's why one company's salami may taste distinctive from another company's salami simply because of the bacterial culture that they use. Okay. So just to keep going here, nitrite, and I'm going to dig, we're going to talk about nitrites and nitrates, don't worry. Nitrite is commonly added to fermented sausages to prevent the formation of botulism-causing bacteria. Make a star around that, know it, love it, live it. That's on the test. While some traditional and artisanal producers avoid nitrates, although some of the nitrates must be present to preserve the color of meat, some producers use celery powder. Alright, so that's a convoluted way of saying, oh, all charcuterie items have some form of nitrates in them. Some four. Now, when you're talking about, you know, there's either the salt form of nitrites or there, you can find nitrates in vegetables. So celery, high levels of nitrates, broccoli, cherries. So you can, you can see some celery powder, cherry powder, that's the form of nitrite, though. And USDA, our good friends at the USDA, have established, though, for like the example of bacon. If you've ever gone to the store and seen, you know, bacon, and then uncured bacon. Like uncured, what is that? It's still cured. But legally to be able to call it uncured, they use celery powder or vegetable powder. And that makes it clean, so to speak. So a lot of our account reps, I know they work with some of our clean customers, that sounded weird. But as far as the ingredients, right? You know that, but that's definitely on the test. This is a big thing that charcuterers want, or the general public to know. So you bet your bottom dollar, there's going to be a couple of questions about nitrates on here. So sugar is added to aid to the bacterial production of lactic acid during the, because you got, they got to have some of the. The thing is, sugar has to be added to this to allow the bacteria to have something to turn into lactic acid. The fermentation time depends on the temperature at which the sausage is stored. The lower the temperature, the longer the required fermentation period. So the colder it is, the longer it's going to take to ferment. I bet you that's on the test, too. The white mold and yeast sometimes adhere The white mold and yeast sometimes adheres to the outside of uh, sausage during the drying process. This is a great picture of that, give you an idea of like it shows, you know, this is kind of different kinds, but I like to see the age of it too. Um. So this mold though, acts uh, adds to the flavor of the sausage and aids in preventing harmful bacteria from attaching to the sausage. So we want it there, it's a good thing. Um, I've heard, you know, back in the day, like some, some larger charcuterieers, some that are really large all across the country, they may put like rice flour around it to give it the look of authenticity. Where quite honestly, these molds are gonna grow organically uh, in their aging rooms. And just like cheese and cheese caves, you know, those molds, those yeasts, those microflora are going to attach themselves to the side of the walls and live there. So that's what's gonna keep imparting to every salami that they put in there, it's just gonna keep rejuvenating itself, right? And you're gonna get that very specific flavor. Alright, two main types of fermented sausage are dry, uh, salted, uh, spiced sausages found in warmer climates and fermented uh, semi-dry sausages found in cooler, more humid climates. I remember I got asked a question at one of my last trainings, like, well, I had this one salami that almost felt kind of raw while eating it, but they said it was done. Uh, and that's because it was actually just cured in a cooler climate. So the cooler the climate, the longer it's gonna take and I don't wanna say the more raw the texture, but the more raw like the texture, it's gonna have a younger texture too. So casings, sausage casing, also known as sausage skin or simply casing, if that's the material that, that encloses the meat. So if you're gonna make a, a, a salami, age it and cure it, you're gonna have to have a casing. The very first casing, of course, uh, animal intestines. That's the first, that's the first casing that there ever was. Um, and I don't know why, but some people always seem to get a little grossed out by things like that or talking about intestines and, but if we're learning about meat. For me, I think it's important for all of us to appreciate and strive for those producers who use every bit of the animal. I feel thankful that an animal gives its life to give me sustenance, to have something delicious. And I wanna know the people, the people that make that, or whatever I eat, whatever meat product I eat. I want to know that they're use, doing their best to use every bit of the animal. And to use every bit of the animal, you're using their intestines to grind up other parts of the meat, so that we can again, show that animal some honor. I think that's important and that's a message that we all need to speak with as well. But there's also artificial casings, um, and that could just be by demand, you know, came about, whether it's a textural item uh, or price point, uh, but you can also use collagen cellulose uh, and extruded casings. I don't remember specific question about the different types of casings. But you will get asked about what the original casing for salami is, that's a question. Alright, so here, not really trying to, you know, push uh, this brand, the Salumi Italiani, but it is a good brand though. But I wanted to talk about this uh, the salami in particular. And so the Salumi Milano, of course, it's from Milan. Uh, what makes it different? What makes each salami unique and special is, number one, the, the, how finely the meat and the fat is grated. So if you've got bigger, bigger meat chunks and smaller fat chunks, it's gonna give you a different texture uh, experience. If like here in the Milano, they look almost even where you've got kind of big meat, big fat chunk through, they're going for a specific texture. Besides texture, what makes all these salamis different is the ingredients used inside. So this one is your, your, I don't wanna say a plain Jane, because it's not, I don't mean that negative. But it's your good, good, basic starter level salami with salt, pepper and garlic. That's it, it's the, kinda, I call that like just a few ingredients, not that much. But then you go to something like a Genoa. So Genoa, can't sit up and not, you absolutely need to know Genoa salami. Uh, this is probably one of the biggest known salamis in the United States as far as a style. Um, but you're looking at what makes it different and this is how I think it's important for you to make flashcards for all of these meats. Let's start, Genoa salami. Don't have to go through all the major things, but no, uh, it's from, it's got garlic, salt, black and white peppercorns and red or white wine. And that's gonna be your go-tos. So the fact that it does have wine in it, that's your biggest thing is you got peppercorn and wine to get a good Genoa salami. Next up, sopressata, so sopressata, uh, what's gonna make this one different, of course, is well, they use rosemary oils, uh, as far as a little bit of flavor, uh, cherry powder and celery extract, extracts. Well, the thing that made uh, sopressata a little different when it first came out. The very traditional styles of sopressata are actually pressed. So sopressata, so it's, it's, it's pressing, where they would put a brick on it, so you'd get more like an oval shape to the salami. Um, and that's really what makes a lot of the, the sopressata a little bit different, uh, and of course that it comes from Calabria. Alrighty, calabrese. So calabrese, what makes this one different? Uh, the fact that you're gonna have paprika, chili peppers and other spices, so calabrese is bright red. That's what makes it different, it visually looks different and that's because you're paprika. And of course it's spicy, because you're gonna have chili peppers, you still got pepper, you still got salt, you still have spices. But chili peppers is what sets it apart from anything else. Alrighty, dry curing, that was just fermentation. So in dry curing, um, of course, the, the word cure comes from the Latin word curare, uh, which is to take care of. Curing is any of various food preservation and flavoring processes of foods such as meat, fish and vegetables by the addition of salt, sodium chloride, uh, with the aim of drawing moisture out of the food by the process of osmosis. That's on your test, that's one of your questions. You gotta know what osmosis is, dry curing, if you just put salt on the outside and letting that salt pull the moisture out, osmosis. Um, because curing increases the salt concentration in the food and hence decreases the water potential. The food becomes inhospitable for the micro growth that causes food spoilage. And I think that's big, that's same, again, very similar to cheese. Now curing can be traced back to antiquity, if not older. Again, soon as we humans learned about salt and what it could do, you bet your bottom dollar that half of that mammoth that early humans killed was packed in salt of some sort to help let make it last for a while. Um, let's see. Now dehydration was the earliest form of food curing, which whether that you're gonna sit, leave it out in the sun and let it dehydrate, slice it really thin, you know, kinda like if you're making jerky. Uh, but many curing processes also involve smoking, spicing, cooking or the addition of combinations of sugar or nitrite or nitrates. So dry curing, you could also have something like speck, which is dry cured and smoked. Alrighty, nitrates and nitrates, what in the heck is going on here? So nitrite and nitrate are naturally occurring molecules in vegetables. And is also added to cured and processed meats to delay the spoilage and pathogenic bacterial growth. Um, research over the past fifteen years has led to a paradigm change in our ideas about health effects of both nitrite and nitrate. Whereas historically, the nitrate and nitrite uh, were considered harmful food additives and listed as a probable carcinogen, that's probably a human carcinogen. Uh, they're now considered by some as an indispensable nutrient, essential for cardiovascular health by promoting uh, nitric oxide production. So, just like anything guys, we're, we live in a real world, right? Where we live in the food world, you're gonna have somebody out there that's pushing a food product that goes against another food product, so you're probably got some health people, health nuts out there that really wanna shame and put, put cured meats down, so like they got those nitrates in them, they're gonna kill you, they're really bad. Yeah, if you have a ton of it, uh, but just like anything else, you're gonna find more nitrates in your celery stalk than you are in your piece of meat. So don't worry about that, it just gotta, but it's what scientists kind of picked up on the game, really understood the process. We actually need this, we need this form of salt in our lives. Uh, now in the days before refrigeration, our ancestors learned that meat would keep longer if you smoked or salted it. They also discovered that a particular type of salt, sodium nitrite, is an especially good preservative because it uh, inhibits the growth of uh, colostrum botulinum. I probably messed that up, I'm sorry. A serious deadly pathogen that creates one of the most lethal toxins known to man. Botulinum, the cause of botulism. I don't know if you picked up on the fact that I've said botulism twenty-two times today. That's on your test, like that is a huge thing that affects everybody in the charcuterie world. Whether you're growing animals, like you're feeding animals or you're slaughtering them, you're making it or you're selling it. We all have to be aware of that, so know you're gonna get asked a couple of questions about that. Sodium nitrite also gives cured meat their characteristic reddish pink color and adds to their taste and texture. And this is what I was talking earlier about bacon. Um, cured bacon is preserved with a commercial preparation of salt and sodium nitrates. Uh, nitrates are added, uh, again, given to the pink color. Now uncured bacon is bacon that hasn't been cured with sodium nitrates. Usually it's cured with a form of celery, we talked about that, celery powder, which contains natural nitrates uh, and plain old sea salt, as well as other flavorings like parsley and beet extracts. Uncured bacon has to be labeled, uncured bacon, no nitrates or nitrates added. However, it does not mean that that does not contain nitrates. So kinda driving that home, um, everybody that wrote questions on the test, nitrates and nitrite debate is big with them. So absolutely know about that. Prosciutto, this is probably your most famous uh, style of dry cured meat. Prosciutto is an Italian dry cured ham, the most famous of which, prosciutto di Parma, from the Emilia Romagna region. Uh, if you've ever heard me talk about cheese, you know that, you know, prosciutto di Parma is tied in with parmigiano reggiano. And why is that? Because the way that is left from the cheese baking process of parmigiano reggiano goes to feed the pigs that will become uh, prosciutto di Parma, so they tie it in. And this is something we haven't touched on yet either, but is also very important to the old world. PDO, so the Protected Designation of Origin. You also have that in meat, so if you've studied cheese, you've got a good leg up and you probably already know that, yeah, it's got the seal, right? You gotta have that, that uh, that PDO seal to make it real. So that's something to remember, there are PDO, you're gonna have, I think, prosciutto San Daniele is on here, one to know that's protected. Uh, but I would know the protected meats, the same as you needed to know your protected cheeses for the CCP. Uh, prosciutto, uh, using the hind leg, now you can use prosci- it's a cured ham. More often than not, you're gonna see it uh, with pig, right? Uh, the hind leg of the animals, uh, but you can use any animal is what this is saying, but you're gonna use a pig for this. Uh, like prosciutto cotto, uh, Daniele, that's lamb prosciutto, so you can't have a different meat. But for our purposes, it's mainly gonna be pigs, speaking of pigs, right? So delicious, so plump, so lovely. Why, why do y'all think we use pigs more than any other animal? Uh, when dealing with charcuterie? Well, I'll tell you, because I don't have a talkative group today. Uh, but of course, we use pork more than any other animal, because they're so tasty, yes, Katie, thank you very much. Uh, they are very yummy, but they also produce rapidly. Uh, I don't know, better way to say it, but pigs are like rabbits, they breed regularly, right? And not only that, but pigs can, they grow to maturity rather quickly. Within four to six months, pigs are ready to have their own litters. They grow, thing is, if you feed them well, pigs like physically grow quickly. You know, they'll get big, they'll turn from like a ten pound piglet to a sixty to seventy pound pig in just a few weeks. So you have that going for them, uh, so they, and when a sow is ready to have a pig or have her, have her litter, she can have anywhere from, I think it's like eight to fourteen or eight to sixteen piglets per litter. So imagine at four to five months old, you can keep doing that, um, so a lot, they make a lot of meat. And that's the number one reason that, that pigs are used. Um, besides that, yes, they're absolutely delicious and lend themselves perfectly to becoming charcuterie. Um, you will need to know certain things, you know, as far as the history of charcuterie, you know, it's like, are pigs indigenous to the United States? No, you know, I grew up in a, in rural Alabama, uh, and we have wild boar all along the riverbank of the Tom Bigby River in the deep south, I know they're in Texas too. But like pigs will grow their nuisance now, because they breed so quickly and they'll hang out by all the farmland that's along rivers and they'll root it up and tear it up, where people have to go in and take care of. But all that came about is in the early times of, uh, I like to call it exploration, right? Where we have people running to get spices, uh, in all kind of trades. What they would do, these, these just uh, explorers on their boats, they'd carry pigs. And once they got to an island or to a new land, they would release some of those pigs out into the wild. They would become a mating pair and end up, you know, and they knew if, once they left that island or left that land to go back home, when they came back, there would be a food source for them. So the Caribbean, oh, they dumped off a lot of pigs there and Florida, once they hit in Florida, all along the east coast, man. Once those settlers came into the US, they were dumping off pigs and pigs just took over. Um, but that's something to know for the exam as well. Alrighty, now the process of making prosciutto can take months to two years, nine months to two years, depending on the size of the ham. If it is a protected product, know how long it has to age. Today, uh, the ham, as you see here, but it's first cleaned, salted and left for about two months. So if you look at the bottom picture, that's a picture of it, ham being cleaned, pulling off some of the fat trimmings. But you also have to bleed it, so a raw leg of, 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 of pork is gonna have some blood in it, blood spoils. We gotta get rid of it, so they'll even press it sometimes to push any remaining and give it a day or two to push all the blood out. Once that blood is gone, then they could apply salt, like the picture at your top right. And after the salt is applied for a couple of days, they'll go back around and rub fat, like you see in this uh, picture of the top left. Uh, they'll put some fat around the cap of the ham to prevent any air from getting in, and then they left, they let it sit up there and dry. Um, and during that time, the, the surrounding air is important to the final quality of the ham. The best results are obtained in a cold climate, the ham is then left to dry up to eighteen months. So when, like, learning how to talk to customers too, ham's not cheap, right? You know, prosciutto, a good prosciutto, like a good reggiano, you pay a little bit more for. But there's so much of an investment in quality as well as time, that that's where that uh, uh, price point comes from. Alrighty, so prosciutto italiano, this one's from the Salumi Italiani brand, uh. I usually do this with a tasting, it'll heavy now, sorry. But one thing I wanted to point out here, which is unique to, not only unique to, to, to meat, but it is a uh, protected product. So this is like prosciutto, this is prosciutto di Parma, but once you slice, once you, once you slice an item in the United States that is a PDO product, it is no longer a PDO product. So to be, have it sealed a PDO from the beginning to the end of the process, prosciutto di Parma would have to be made, aged, sliced and packed all in the Emilia Romagna region to keep the seal and then shipped to the United States. One of the problems is, is that inherently it's sometimes cheaper to get a whole leg of prosciutto shipped to the United States, use a facility that we already use to slice it up and pack it. That we can make it a little, it'll makes it a, a, a lower selling price for a lower price point, but once you do that, you lose the seal. So that is something that's probably on the test as well, I think I recall one question about that. So PDO items that are not sliced in the PDO area can no longer uh, carry the seal. How about that? Alrighty, oh, speck, this is my favorite, I talk about it so much, uh, but speck is on the test because it's delicious. Um, Italian cured smoked meat native to uh, Alto Adige, uh, a region that straddles northern Italy and southern Austria. To make speck, a boned pork leg, so this is what makes it different, like you have a different, it looks like a different cut, right? It's still the hind legs, but it is deboned before curing. It's still behind legs, but it is deboned before curing. Where prosciutto is deboned after curing. Just a little different there. Uh so that's where you're gonna get that long strip of speck. And so it looks a little bit like a different cut of meat. It comes from the same portion, but they debone it first, right? And then it is cured in salt spices like laurel and juniper. And then intermittently slow smoked using pine or juniper wood for several months. And this is something amount, because that really goes into speck P D O, right? So again, the P D O meats, know a little bit more about those. It's more important to know about the P D Os, okay? Um but the fact that they use pine or juniper. Remember when I first started really enjoying food, I was like, wow, what does it matter? What what would you use to smoke with? I tell you, if you've ever had mesquite barbecue, you'll know there's a vast difference. And I've learned through time that, you know, especially being southern, I love a pecan smoke. You know, I'm used to something like pecan chips, like going on to something. But here, juniper, juniper and pine are gonna lend to the flavor. Uh you're gonna get a deep red color with heavily marbled traces of fat. Speck is served thinly sliced as an appetizer or used to flavor cooked dishes. So some of the questions on this exam do fall in this line. So like, you know, once we get to lardo, like some of the different cuts or um one chalé. What are they used for? So know a few common applications, especially if they come from the books. Uh but more often than not, know that it needs to be sliced thin. These are questions, like imagine you are a, you're behind the counter. Whether you're in a meat and cheese place or you're just behind the meat counter slicing it up. You need to know how to slice speck for a customer without them asking. You need to know how to slice prosciutto without the customer asking. Those are questions. So of course, thin, they want things sliced very thin. Then I think, you know, if you went into pairing items, that's a little pairing with meat, you know, of course you wanna focus on your acidity like pickles, mustards, things like that. Uh but be getting too specific, I think gets too much into opinion. But know that meat sliced thin pairs well with something acidic. If you know those general areas, then you're gonna do pretty good. And note that speck from uh the Alto Adige region, uh which enjoys a Protected Designation of Origin should not be confused with the German usage of the word which refers to lard. Uh but speck really came about because of course it's from northern uh Italy, basically up there closer into the mountains where it is even a little bit cooler than normal. Uh so it takes, the thing is, it was taking that meat too long to cure. So like prosciutto, perfect climate. But if that meat was taking too long to cure, they added smoke to help make that meat cure a little bit faster before it spoiled. And that's basically how speck was born. Love it. Other things to know, uh as far as you got pancetta. So you'll get asked something about this, often hailed as the Italian bacon. That could be a question, you know, what is, what, what word, what, what, what charcuterie item is known as Italian bacon? You need to know it's pancetta. Uh it's a cured cut of pork belly, common throughout Italy, but you gotta know that it's rolled. Again, think of the big picture with each of these items, pancetta, Italian bacon, rolled pork belly. Like if you get those few things, boom, boom, you've got that question already, already done. Typically rolled into a sim- uh cylinder and tied with twine. Uh as it cures, pancetta has a pronounced salty flavor, often complemented with uh pepper and other spices and offers a generous fat to meat ratio. So we always talk about, you know, um uh rind ratios, even rind distribution in cheese. Generous fat to meat ratios, that that that's its take in charcuterie. Thinly sliced, it makes an excellent cold cut. Though it's frequently treated as a culinary meat where thick slices or cubes can be rendered in a pan to yield a porky, salty base for pasta sauces, uh braises or sauteed vegetables. Use it where you would bacon. And I would know that a dish like cabanara. That is, cabanara usually uses pancetta, like a big thing that sticks out, know that for sure. Of course, you can use it anywhere you use bacon, but cabanara, it usually calls for pancetta. One chalé. So like pancetta, one chalé is commonly used for cooking. Uh the rich and tender pig jowls are cured with salt and uh but producers often add pepper, bay, juniper, you can add it wherever you want, but oh, I keep thinking every time I look in the mirror to shave, I'm like, I better have some delicious jowls. But it's a really high fat content, so it renders, so the fat renders uh easily. And adds excellent, but not an overpowering flavor to countless cooked. Uh oh wait, one chalé is uh cabanara. Excuse me. I kept, I went off on a cabanara rant there. It considered a crucial element in cabanara. So change that, one chalé. Alright. Lardo is another one. Uh given that lardo is literally lard, uh your first inclination might be to cook with it. Don't. This is something important about lardo. Smooth, uh meltingly tender cut is delicious. Uh if artery clogging, pluck straight from the plate. Uh the buttery slightly tangy flavor is complimented by a spice rub that recalls American-style barbecue. Uh you serve it thinly sliced uh on a fried dough or a toasted piece of crusty bread where it'll warm until translucent. So that's the main thing to remember about lardo. It is fat, but it's fat meant to be eaten like charcuterie. But you gotta slice it real thin, put it on something hot, and let that just gradually heat it up. So nice. Now whole muscle. Whole muscle is a category. Uh of course, we've been talking about a lot of these. Salami is a major uh branch of Salumi. Whole muscle cuts are the other. Uh don't be fooled about the word muscle though, because there's plenty of delicious fat all around it. Uh and while most of the muscle salami are dry cured with salt, often in conjunction, of course, with sugar, spices, aromatics, or wine. It'd probably surprise you to learn that so many are just commonly served cooked. Uh others like pancetta or one chalé are so fatty or mild cured though uh that they can be eaten as is. Most consumers prefer them for cooking. Anything that's called Salumi can be eaten raw. That, wanna look into the screen there, anything that's referred to as Salumi can be eaten raw. That means through its production of uh not, like that's after it's cured, right? You can eat it like that, but it doesn't necessarily mean that you want to, like bacon. Bacon, you could eat it raw. It's cured, but it doesn't mean that you really want to. Uh types of whole muscle salami include that we're gonna talk about some copa, bacon, pancetta, uh belly, prosciutto, and bressola. So copa, also known as uh capocola. Right? Uh with its vivid red color and heavily marbled, copa also known as capocola. Uh gabagool, if you're from Jersey, oh yeah. It's beautiful. Each province treats this meat differently, but the cut, uh so from the back of the neck and top shoulder of the pig remains more or less consistent. So really, so I call it like the back strap. Right behind there, it's usually gonna be your cut of meat as far as dealing with the pig. Uh I kinda put that picture up on the top left to show you, so it's more for a pig, it's that back neck to shoulder area, but it comes from one muscle. Uh it's typically sold to the US as hot or sweet. And when you're talking anything about sweet with Italian meats or Italian cooking, it does not mean sugar added to it. It means not hot. They either have a hot and spicy version or a sweet version, and that's it. Uh but in Italy, various, they extend more, uh you know, Italy, they have different blends. You can have nutmeg, cinnamon, cloves, all that kinda stuff. Many recipes incorporate wine, garlic, herbs, uh and spices in varying quantities before the meat is sealed in a natural casing for roughly a six-month cure. Here's just a little bit about that. Now bressola. Do pay attention to, I would, I would uh make note of every bit of charcuterie item that you come across in their list that's not pork. Because it's very few. And I would say you're gonna get probably asked some questions about these, these smaller niche items such as bressola. Absolutely, it's a famous, of course, but this is beef. Uh and also, if you're a customer or talking to customers or retailers, having a non-pork charcuterie item is important for your set. You don't have a well-rounded set until you have something that is not pork. So that you can really make all of your customers happy. Okay. Uh so the vast majority of Italian salamis are made with pork, but this beef is the star, and it cured whole muscle cut from the leg uh or round. Uh the lean ruby red meat has somewhat of a floral aroma, is salty, but not so much that it overpowers your pronounced jerky-like beef flavor. This to me, like bressola, tastes a little like wine. It is tangy, it's delightful. Uh it's a great deal in common with the Swiss blunder uh blunderfleisch. Uh no surprise, given that bressola uh hails from the uh same valley. Just a stone's throw away from the Swiss border. Now, the beef is cured in a mixture of salt and pepper and then hung to dry for several months. Some purveyors also lightly smoke it. Uh the product is complete in the maturation process. Typically, typically served very thin with pickles and rauchel. My days of working the cheese counter in New York City, anytime I sold this, people asked for rauchel. It's a, it's just a very, very common pairing and it may be a good enough pairing for you to be asked a question about it on your test. Alright, so we talked to the other whole muscles we talked about before. We went through a lot of those. Uh whoop, I'm going too fast. Cooked. So cooked. Uh of course, not all salamis are dry cured or uh or fermented. Not to mention some varieties like uh induja or semi-hard uh products that fall somewhere in the in-between. Uh in the vast majority of cases, you're probably gonna wanna remove membranes, that's, that's to be said. But here are some examples, just looking at these pictures. This is what falls into the category, and you definitely will get asked questions like this. Is this a fermented product? Is this a cooked product? Is it dry cured? Is it smoked? So it would be pate, mortadella, porchetta, prosciutto gran cotto, and a grellet. All are cooked, so that's something to know. Mortadella, uh I always call this the fat man's dream. Love it. One of my favorites. Uh it is, of course, comes from the Bologna uh region in Italy. Uh the godfather of the American baloney that we know and love, right? Uh but where Americans took baloney and hot dogs, I'm bringing those up because those are emulsified meats like we have here. And but mortadella, it's less about using the crummy cuts of meat versus making a quality product. Um so I think we Americans are really taken to the point of definitely trying to use every bit of the animal, but the worst parts. So like, it's, don't, don't consider it the same as a hot dog or regular baloney. This is good quality meat that's got some fat marbleized in there as well as um pistachios. And that's one, one major thing to, like, if you're talking about mortadella on your card, right, pistachio, emulsified meat, guy, you know, godfather to baloney. Like those are just good things to remember. Um and this, as far as serving, this is an allergy question as well. Not just a product ingredient question, but if you're working behind the the counter, you know, would you want to, they, in in some way, form, or fashion, they're gonna ask, would you want to slice traditional mortadella on a slicer that you cut all your other meats on? However, they ask that question, but it's gonna be no, like because it is, or or one of the reasons could be because it is an uh an allergen. So we have to watch out for that, which is why a lot of times you're gonna see uh mortadella with pistachios pre-packed to help give people that option. Porchetta, uh this is amazing. Just remember that this is uh you're, you're looking at a pork loin uh rolled in a pork belly and cooked. Absolutely amazing. Uh this is a pre-sliced version. Uh the versions that people make in kitchens, uh I'm sure if any of you are chefs out there, you made a porchetta that has a good crispy skin on it. Like that's to me what it should be about, but just know pork loin wrapped in bacon. At the campagna, another cooked version. Uh know a little bit of your differences between your pates, specifically campagna, which you're gonna be talking about country style, which country style is going to be your chunky style. I call campagne is more like meatloaf in a sense, but of course, that's the domain with liver. And it is cooked. Your other style, which I don't have a picture up here just yet, but that's gonna be your uh mousse pate. And mousse pate is literally whipped in mousse uh liver. Okay, and the major ingredients in pates, liver. That's the main thing. So here, if you're looking at this Alexian, uh just how they wrote it down, pork fat, pork, pork liver, onion spices, sherry, salt, garlic. You're not gonna have to know that much about the ingredients. But again, what's the big thing sticking out at you? Liver. Pate, liver. Put that in your head and you're gonna do fine. Alright, sausages, we're gonna be linking up now and going into more smoked. Um but let's see, distinctive flavor of some sausages due to fermentation. All of these big words, all these starter cultures up here. Uh other countries use different systems of classification. Germany, for instance, which produces more than twelve hundred types of sausage, distinguishes raw, cooked, and precooked sausages. That's something to know, because just like we went through our four production methods of of uh, we're about to get into smoking. We've covered our four production methods. Each method has so many different layers underneath it, right? So this is a good thing to know, but like in Germany, they focus on raw, cooked, and precooked sausages. Raw sausages made with raw meat and they are not cooked. That means that's like your breakfast sausage that you pick up at the market and you cook it yourself with your biscuits in the morning. Cooked sausages may include water or emulsifiers and are always cooked. They will not keep long. Um all these worsts, which you may or may not have had before. Uh but cooked sausages, you buy them cooked, but they're not cured, so they're not gonna last that long. Precooked sausages are made with precooked meat, but may also include raw organ meat. They may be heated uh after casing and they will keep only for a few days. You're not gonna get asked a whole lot. Don't worry about the different styles of German. But it's good to know that the way that the raw, cooked, and precooked, just know that, and I think you'll do fine with this section. Sausages, classification is subject to regional differences. Of regional differences of opinion, various metrics such as the types of ingredients, consistency, and preparation are used. In the English-speaking world, the following distinctions between fresh, cooked, and dry sausages seem to be more or less accepted. So that's something that we like, we really focus on. You got fresh, again, cook it at home, cooked, it's precooked, dry. You're talking about your salami. It goes from, I always get the distinction in my head, I think of sausage as raw, salami as cooked. But they can interchange it. Cooked sausages are made with fresh meats and then fully cooked. Cooked smoked sausages are cooked then and then smoked or smoked cooked. Uh they're eaten hot or cold but need to be refrigerated. So kebasa, mortadella. Like if you go to a barbecue joint, you know, and they're gonna have like, you know, uh uh fresh uh sausages cooked at a barbecue joint, that's your cooked smoked sausage right there. So fresh sausages are made with meats that have not been previously cured. They need to be refrigerated and thoroughly cooked before eating. Fresh smoked sausages are fresh sausages that are smoked and cured. They do not normally require refrigeration. And they do not require any further cooking. Dry sausages are cured. Those are cured, cured salami, if you think of it that way, that are fermented and dry. That's salami. Let's see, bulk sausage, sometimes a sausage meat refers to raw ground spice meat with no casing, but it's still raw. Woo, alright guys, we're hanging in there. Smoking, not a dude, right? We're smoking meat. Uh it's a process of flavoring, browning, cooking, or preserving food by exposing it to smoke from burning or smoking material, most often wood. I mean, you're gonna get people like quality smokers are gonna use quality, not only quality meats, but also a quality wood. Uh I have in my past dealt with people who made like smoked mozzarella, but used the smoke from burning newspapers. I got stories. Buy me a beer, I'll tell you one one day. Um in Europe, alder, like all of the ridge, is traditional smoking wood. But oak is more often used now in beach to a lesser extent. In North America, we love, we have so many meats, we've got, we've got vast lands, so we can have a lot more meat. But you're talking about hickory, mesquite, oak, pecan, alder, maple, and fruit trees such as apple, cherry, plum. Those are commonly used for smoking. All lends to different flavor. But the main thing to get out of here is the Um, but the main thing to get out of here is the four, this is important to you. The four uh smoking can be done in four different ways. Cold smoking. Warm smoking, hot smoking or liquid smoke. Know about each of those. Make a list. That's the, that should be on your, 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 your flashcards. However, these methods of imparting smoke only affect the food's surface and are unable to preserve the food. Thus, smoking is paired with other microbial hurdles such as chilling, chilling and packaging to extend good shelf life. All right, we're not quite done yet. That's the end of that show, but give me just one second and we are going to pull up something else for you. Alrighty, I hope everybody can see the new sheet that is up here. Uh, this is what I emailed out to you. So this is incomplete. I'm still working on it. Uh, but don't think of it as by golly Nathan sure didn't finish my work for me. Use this as a study guide. I did my best to create. You got your recommended readings up here. We went through the shortlist to go through. But now I kind of broke it down by the domains. So that's where I stopped earlier where we were on the website. The website gave us the domains and everything. This is how I've just kind of pulled it together for you a little bit. Preparation of charcuterie products for merchandising. So task one, one, wash and brush product to properly remove mold. And maintain appearance and flavor in order for the product to be appealing to customers. Guys, that's a question on your test. Like the thing is, they haven't established a great way to study for this exam yet. Not going to lie, you probably have been listening to me and like, what are you talking about Nathan? This is all over the place. So in these tasks, every time you see a task one point one, one point two. That's a question. Shh. So make sure you're reading this. That's a statement. Remove the casing to make the product appealing for the customer when appropriate. That's fine. Like the, these are, so as you go through here, you know, um, let's see, so I'm going back to one, one point one. The safe and effective performance of this task requires knowledge of K one. The difference between good and bad mold. So we got to know the difference between good and bad mold. We got to look that up. What is the, what is good mold and what is bad mold? Uh, so remove the casing, the safe and effective performance of this task requires knowledge of. Differences in casings. We talked about that, right? We just did that. So know your casing. What's edible? What's inedible? What's natural? It's collagen. What's synthetic? What's plastic? Looking at that, you're going to be, you're synthetic and plastic. You're going to be, you're inedible. Collagen is not going to be chewable, but it's not going to kill you. Products that have casings. Know if you have a casing. So while you're making your, your study guides, while you're going through your fermented meat. Section like it's got a casing, casing, boom. Continuing with domain one, the preparation of charcuterie products for merchandising. Task one point three, trim the product by hand to maintain the intended integrity of the product. The safe and effective performance of this task requires, so the task is a statement, which can be turned into a question. But where you, where, how do you know this? You know, get the knowledge from K dash five, why trimming is taking place. To remove skin, vanity, inedible or uh. Hard pieces uh to defat dealing with uh gelli or wax. So that's kind of a lot in there. But that's when you're going through your books, when you see the why. Again, like you're not going to get asked, I, I a question like one question per cut of meat on this. You just have to know the overarching. Um, you know, like, why they're going to ask like, why do you cut the casing off of? Uh, why do you cut the casing off of a sample piece of salami that you're handing to a customer? Cause you don't want it to get stuck in the teeth. I think a lot of this, as you hopefully you're figuring out is kind of. It's standard, right? This is not, there's nothing here to trick you. If you've sold meat, you've been around it. I think you're going to know what's going on here. Uh, so task one point four, cut the product by machine. Or by hand in accordance with the uh specific methods recommended for various styles. Okay? So if you're reading through the book and you've got prosciutto de parma, they recommend that. It's a hand slicer. Hand slicer, not cut by hand. You got to know a couple of different terminologies now. Hand slicing, is that by literally your hand holding a knife? That's something that you're going to do more with like uh pate, right? The safe and effective performance of this task requires knowledge of proper approach, technique and recommended method for each item. Whether uh with the grain, against the grain, thickness or et cetera. When to set up a station uh cut using a knife? When to set up a station cut using a slicer? How to properly operate a slicer? So you're going to get that. So uh. You got to know when going through here, what you're going to cut by a slicer, electric versus hand crank. So here we have our definitions. They're going to use the word electric or they're going to use hand crank. A lot of these are going to lend towards hand crank. Uh, like I said, especially if you want to cut it really, really thin. Um, and electric is going to be more for your cooked items. Just continuing on as we're still having here for a few more minutes. Um, task one, set up a station properly in accordance with safety and ergonomics to slice with a knife or slicer. Safe and effective performance of this task requires knowledge of how to set up a cut station using a knife slicer manual. So here, we got to dig through some of these books, right? And figure out the right one. Um. Select and maintain appropriate equipment in accordance with uh. Products offerings. The safe and effective performance of this task requires knowledge of. How equipment and tools can impact texture, flavor and trim loss? What products and equipment are available? The lifespan of the equipment and why it's important, operation and maintenance of equipment. So that's going to be basic when you get to any equipment point, but the things that I want you to remember that you may not find in the book, of course, right off the bat is. You know, electric slicers impact the texture. Uh, because again, it's, it spends at a much higher RPM. It's very hot. It causes friction. On the meat. It's spinning so fast. And like when it hits the, when it hits the meat, it. It, it heats it because it's a lot of friction. The hand crank creates much less friction. So you get that thinner piece of meat without cooking the outside a little bit. Um, and that's the main thing that you want to talk about. And that to use a slicer. If you've ever sliced a whole leg of prosciutto on a, on a, or even on an electric slicer. You know that you've got to trim that leather back, that outside skin. Basically turns to leather in a sense of that it's, it gets hard. And you don't need to send that through your slicer because that's going to dull your blade. And that's really what these are talking about. There's not, but the problem is, is there's not one book in here that says slicer maintenance. This is how it's done. Or what to slice with what slicer? We don't have that right in front of us, but we've got our common sense and our expertise and our experience going through there. Plus you got me. I'm here. You can always ask me a question. So just going through here, preparation, uh, continuing on. Train staff on how to operate and maintain equipment used in cutting charcuterie. The safe and effective performance of this cast task requires knowledge of how equipment and tools can impact, we already said that. Uh, what products and equipment are available, the lifespan of the equipment. Uh, sharpened equipment with regard to manufacturer recommendations. That's a big answer, guys, because you've got Hobart versus Berkel versus this company versus this company. It really goes down to what the manufacturer suggests. So don't worry about that too much. Uh, but of course, like when, you know, when is it time to sharpen your slicer? When it becomes more difficult to slice the meat. Sometimes it can be just that easy. Okay. Where you don't have to overthink it. Um, now how, how each item of equipment item is to be presented, cutting procedures to maximize product and to minimize product waste. Alrighty, domain two. Uh, marketing, sales, including customer service, merchandising. So this is forty-three percent of your test questions, what we just covered. Forty-two. I'm going to have to relook that up, but this one is a big one. Alright, so marketing, sales, including customer service and merchandising. Educate customers for value-added sales by describing products, styles, ingredients, origin, preparation, producers and characteristics. So this is what is most of the test. This one is most of your test here, but again, educate customers. This go into the mindset, I am behind the counter. If you approach this test like I am behind the counter. And thinking that method, you're going to do pretty well. The safe and effective performance of this task, you require knowledge of categories of charcuterie. Dry whole muscle, cooked and fermented as listed below. Whole muscle, not smoked, smoked. This is on the test. This is something where like mortadella. Like this isn't cooked or ground or anything, but they will, they will ask specific cuts of meat. Is this whole muscle not smoked, smoked? Whole muscle cooked, not cooked, ground, fermented, smoked or not smoked. Ground cooked, smoked or unsmoked. You'll need to know that where like spec is cured, smoked. Where you have prosciutto is cooked or excuse me cured, unsmoked. If that makes sense. And that's easy enough to remember. Once you, once you uh fill out, you know, write, write your cards and kind of go through each of these items. It'll really become clear to you. Alright, so now I've only got a couple more minutes with you, uh, but this is all you have these slides. And what I've done is I've plugged in the information that I already have. We know brisola. We don't have. Coletto or cool at the low, culatello, excuse me. You'll have to look that one up. One chalé we have, lardo we know about, pancetta we know about, prosciutto de parma. Prosciutto send that yele, you'll need to look up. Jambon de manier, you need to look up jambon royal or serrano, uh, ibérico. Di balatto, lomo. So my suggestion now, as far as finishing up your study and kind of continuing moving through is fill out the blanks. Lomo, look that up. Keep going. We've got, we know what spec is. West Philly and ham, Virginia ham, know that. So what I've done here. I've kind of gone through as they've listed the meat. So now we've got whole muscle cooked, unsmoked. So everything listed here. Should work the same way. Whole muscle cooked, smoked. Don't worry about the pictures I put in here. Those are just place markers. Pastrami, fermented and smoked. Hard salami, genoa, induja, sopasada, sosse son sec. So we've got all those. Fermented and smoked pepperoni. Browned cooked, unsmoked, solomicoto, bologna, mortadella. Moose, tarry, pate, en cru. So many. Budan. I remember they asked a couple of questions about Budan. Um. So this is, I mean, this is a lot of work, I know, but as you see each of these, just go through. I've listed everything out from the sheet and that's just domain one. This business setup, I went and copied exactly what they had from the domains. So keep studying this and move forward. And what we'll do, give me about uh, about three weeks. I've got a bunch of travel to do. We'll hold another training. When we go through here, I'll have more information for you. Um, and we'll keep plugging through. Uh, send me any questions if you have any. My, you're going to get up with me by reaching out to. Naldridge at G F I foods. Dot com. Anybody questions at this particular time before I let you go? You've got this, guys. Mr. Decu, yes, sir.
We help you with this. So we've got this as a PDF, right? So we're all building, we're all building our own flashcards and stuff. Have you? Is there a way you could open this up and we can kind of split it up and start putting stuff in and start kind of makes the, the lift a little less helps you out? And we all can kind of start putting stuff in there.
Yeah, no, I'll find a way to send it to you. I know with, with, with people within the company, I'll put it in the W drive. That makes it easy. But yeah, I'll find a workable version for you.
Yeah, it was shareable and we can just kind of split it up together if you want to.
I know, that'd be great.
Some stuff we could, we could put it in instead of us all building our own flashcards. We kind of use it. Everybody else is doing too.
Perfect. What uh, what we'll do is I'll just give some assignments out. Uh, this is a tiny uh group here, give you a little bit of a, a specific area to focus on. Uh, and if you all can help me fill this out, that'd be great. And that, and from that, we can all build this together. Uh, but, but seriously, guys, this is, everybody on this list. You guys know what's up and I don't want you to take this unseriously, but I really think you got this. But do study. You absolutely have to study. I'm just saying you got this because I want you to stay confident and not let me like, oh crap, it's only a couple of months and I'm going to fail. I found out about this test last year at exactly this time. I, I just found out it existed. I'm like, holy crap, I got two months to study for this. Pushed through it, was able to study for it, maintain my job. You guys can do this, but yeah, thank you, Andy. I think the best way to do this is to divvy it up. Uh, give some assignments out, let everybody kind of pull in the information and uh, and plug it in. So I'll do that. Thank you. Anybody else? Awesome. You guys are the best. Thank you as always. Uh, and again, and don't forget, of course, this will be recorded. Put onto the website or excuse me, not the website, but the YouTube channel Institute du fromage. Uh, and be looking out about three to four weeks from now, we'll hold this again and we'll go back over it all. Alrighty, have a great day.